We left all the time.
Okay. Tapes on.
Ready?
Hang on. I just want to see if.
Some adventures.
Maybe he can't find a spot.
Are we on the mountain?
I brought a dog.
Just want to make sure we have sound.
Hand me up. Hand me up.
It was our end. It was six of them. We had no end. No TV, nothing. We have sound? Okay. We're on. Excuse me. It's, it's, we're, we're rolling.
This meeting is being held in conformance with the Sunshine Law. Notice of time, date, and place has been furnished to the Bergen Record and Ridgewood News. Notice has also been posted on the bulletin board of the Administration Building. Would the clerk kindly take the roll?
Mayor Giordano?
Here.
Mr. Ritchie?
Here.
Mrs. Sherman?
Here.
Mrs. Weber?
Here.
Everyone kindly stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to their republic where it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us have a moment of silence for all our old big veterans and all veterans across our country who have given the ultimate sacrifice to keep us free, so we can assemble the way we are tonight. Clerk kindly do the prayer.
Dear Lord, we start this meeting asking for your guidance and wisdom. May we find unity and fairness. The outcome should reflect our wishes to assist the borough in all their endeavors. Thank you, in his name, amen.
Amen.
Good evening, everyone, and at this time, we will have a proclamation honoring the month of May as Mental Health Month. Whereas mental health is an essential to overall health and well-being, and all people experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and should feel comfortable in seeking help with the support to manage these times. And whereas, like physical illness, mental illness is a medical condition that can be treated effectively through prevention, early identification, and early intervention, and with effective treatment, all of individuals with mental illness can make progress towards recovery and lead full, productive lives. And whereas, mental illness affects one in five people in the United States, and the experience can be devastating for individuals and families with little knowledge or access to mental health services. And whereas, the COVID-19 pandemic has created a multitude of mental health challenges for our community members of all ages, and connecting people to care is more important than ever. And whereas, May is annually recognized throughout the nation as Mental Health Awareness Month. And whereas, it is the 10th anniversary of the beginning of stigma-free initiative in Bergen County, with Paramus initially declaring itself a stigma-free zone in 2013. And whereas, the Borough of Waldwick declares themselves as a stigma-free zone, and will continue to support the stigma-free initiatives. And whereas, stigma-free zones aim to inspire public interest and open dialogue about stigma, raise awareness of the disease of mental illness, and create a culture wherein residents who have this disease of mental illness feel free to seek treatment for the disease without fear of stigma. And whereas, local resources are available to treat the disease of mental illness, so no one resident needs to suffer alone or feel helpless. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the Borough of Waldwick recognizes the community's needs and continues to support the effects of the, of the county of Bergen in continuing to be stigma-free. And be further proclaimed that I, Thomas Giordano, Mayor of the Borough of Waldwick, Bergen County, New Jersey, on behalf of the entire Borough Council and the community, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month. This proclamation will be put downstairs. Once the April proclamation is removed, this one will be going up. Also, tonight will be our last meeting with our Administrator, Patrick Weary. Patrick Weary will be leaving us this coming Friday. Three years ago, Patrick came to Waldwick as our Administrator. In this short period of time, Patrick has been involved in many projects in Waldwick. He had the foresight to move our borough forward in many ways we never thought of. One of his projects, which came out beautiful, and I know he is very proud of it, is the purchasing of the MNT parking lot, which expanded our parking lot. And as you came into the building tonight, you saw all the flowers and all the plants that are being planted. I wish I would be able to put a plaque up there with your name on it, but that might be a little bit pushing. He was a good listener to our department heads, employees, and especially to all our residents. Whenever a resident called or sent an email to me, I would forward it to Patrick, and Patrick would review it and send them an answer. Sometimes they might not like what he was, they were told by Patrick, but he always did the right thing. I will miss our meetings, Patrick, that we had every week, and especially when you edited all my messages I sent out to the community. Sorry you couldn't edit this one, because I didn't want you to see it. I want to thank you, Patrick, for all you have done for Waldwick, our residents, and myself. You came into our lives here in Waldwick at the right time. It was an amazing experience. Your commitment, dedication, and passion for your work, we will never forget. At the end of Friday's workday, you will no longer be our Administrator, but you will always be our friend. May you have continued success and happiness in your new position as Administrator of the place you call home, Maplewood. On behalf of the mayor and council, Patrick, would I like to present you with this plaque? It is burgundy. And it reads, "Presented to Patrick Weary, February 25, 2019, April 28, 2023. In recognition of your tireless effort, outstanding service, and unselfish dedication to the people in the Borough of Waldwick, with the thanks of a grateful community. Good luck, and thank you very much, Mayor Tom Giordano and the Waldwick Borough Council." Patrick, thank you so much. Also, under my report, I'm just going to say one thing. A couple of Saturdays ago, we had the styrofoam collection. And I was there with a couple of the members, and they did a great job. They collected 40 yards of styrofoam and had to overfill to the top of the container. They also collected plastic bags for our Trex program for a total of 150 pounds. To date, they are at 800 pounds of plastic for our Trex program. They had 81 Waldwick residents deliver materials to the recycling center for this collection. I was there, and I was talking with most of the people that were there, and it was a good time, because it gets me to see the residents, and we talk about a lot of issues, and they get to see the people that make a difference in our community. I'd like to thank Dave Zalkowski, Dave Isaac, Dan Montello, Dr. Reina Provino Dawson, Ted Zanzo, Dr. Mohammed Assem, for coming out, as they always do, and support this program. There'll be another one coming up, and as everyone knows, our Earth Day, which was supposed to be the Saturday, has been canceled to the following Saturday due to the rain that's coming into our community and into New Jersey. So everything will be postponed, and you'll be hearing about other stuff that we are doing that day. In a couple, in a couple of days, it'll be posted all over the place. And it's already posted, because Kelly already told me that. Thank you very much. And that's all I have to report. Public Safety Committee, Mrs. Sherman.
Okay. Let's see. I attended the Ambulance Corps meeting on April 17th, their full assembly of their members. They welcomed their newest member, Ashley, to their organization. She's already been active, and they're very happy to have her. They were proud to announce that one of their members, Adrian, cut the cord of a baby girl born at home on April 15th. That was very exciting for them. They're going to award him with a pin of some sort at a future ceremony date. May 1st, they'll be participating in a mutual aid drill with Allendale to go over each other's rigs and work on plans for a mutual aid, if it's at all necessary. Walvac received a donation from the Valley Hospital that they were very grateful for and will put to good use, purchasing necessary medical supplies. They're looking to coordinate with the Borough the purchase of the Lucas machines. They obtained quotes, and apparently they got a discounted price, so they could forward it maybe to Patrick or Kelly, or Matthew.
One was actually delivered today.
Oh, it was?
Yes.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you, Matthew. I'll be happy to tell them that. Let's see. The membership is finalizing the applications they received. They'll be awarding two scholarships to high school seniors who are going into the medical profession. They're excited to be awarding that. They'll be doing standby at the Waldwick 5K, the Memorial Day Parade, the car show, the high school graduation, and the Allendale fireworks. I'll have more under unfinished business. And Mayor, are we going to be invited to say some things about Patrick?
Sure. We'll do it on the new business.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Recreation and Health Committee, Ms. Weber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to piggyback on what you said about May being Mental Health Awareness Month and Waldwick being stigma-free, there are some resources out there that the county provides. There's a 24-hour helpline for crisis counseling that they provide. The phone number is 201-262-Help, or 201-262-4357. There's also something that I didn't know existed until recently. Just doing some research on, on some mental health and offerings in Bergen County. But it's the Children's Mobile Emergency Services. It's something that's available for children ages 21 and younger. Their number is 877-652-7624. It's available 24 hours a day, and within one hour, somebody will, will respond to your location. They do crisis prevention, and they'll come all hours of the day. Those are just some really good resources that could be used all the time, not just during Mental Health Month. For, in recreation, let's see, on Sunday, the Sunday, April 30th, the Community Band of Waldwick will be performing at the Village School. There's no admission. That's free at 2:30. The Bergen County Utilities Authority is doing a paper shredding and electronics collection, tire collection, and an unwanted medication collection at Bergen County Community College. That's from 9 to 3. May 1st opens the registration for the Waldwick Pool, and the registration for the swimming lessons is also available, and online registration for the Waldwick Swim Team. There's also Bergen County Senior Nutrition Programs. There's an open house on Tuesday, May 16th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The closest one in our area is being offered in Midland Park. You can call 201-445-5690 to register. On May 7th is the Waldwick Chamber of Commerce 5K Run. This year, they are supporting Alex's Lemonade Stand. It's a foundation in fighting childhood cancers. If you're unable to participate in the run, please come out and cheer on the runners. They always enjoy that. The race time's at 9:00 a.m. Waldwick Soccer registrations are still open. Save the date for the Waldick Community Alliance 15th Annual Car Show that is going to be at the Waldick Railroad Station on Saturday, June 4th, from 9 to 3. And then on June 7th will be the first of our concert series. That'll be the Community Band of Waldwick. And that's all, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works Committee, Mr. Ritchie.
Thank you, Mayor. So I had a conversation with a few residents this week about some of the tall grass that was coming up, and I think we were just in one of those unfortunate situations where, you know, in a matter of a week, it went from, you know, there was barely any grass to, you know, it was taller than me, which, you know, I'm not that tall. I was sitting in that seat, obviously, right, Patrick. But it's, it looks like it's mostly been addressed, which is great, and I think the DPW does a nice job of getting out and cutting it when and where needed. There will be a valve repair on Whitehall Ave this week, out by the, the, by the 7-Eleven. I'm not sure that you're aware of it yet, but it's going to be a big job, so get, get ready for that one. So, yeah, by the Bristol, that's right. A little bit closer to the Bristol. So, so look out for that. It'll, it'll take a couple of days. The DPW, in the meantime, has kind of de-winterized everything, and wanted, in, in discussions with the superintendent, wanted to give a shout out to Anthony Paris, who has been really doing a nice job, not only maintaining the vehicles of the DPW, but helping with preventative maintenance and doing a number of, you know, kind of job with the police vehicles as well. And that saves us a lot of money as a borough, so I told the superintendent I'd give a shout out about that. So I'll have more under new business, Mayor. That's my report this evening.
Thank you very much. Buildings and grounds, Mr. Schatz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Patrick, that'll be the last text you'll send to me. Yeah, I end my career with you and texting, seeing if I'm getting here. Apologize for showing up late. I, first of all, I had attended an environmental meeting, but it sounded like Mr. Mayor went ahead and stole all my thunder about that, so I don't have much to talk about. But actually, I do have a lot more to talk about. I can talk about other things.
Sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. Couple of things, we've talked about a lot of things recently, and we, I talked to Patrick about them. I'll talk to Kelly in the interim and whoever's next. But they talked about the possibility of, they're doing their styrofoam program, and they're talking about moving possibly to delivering the styrofoam to the densifier that's in Ridgewood. But that's something we have to work out. It seems like it would be a win-win, because we'd save money by sending them there and less time for us traveling. Also, we talked about the, the, they want, we wanted to bring up, actually, I'll bring it up in, in old business. I'll bring up that one. Also, wanted to bring up the fact that they were, they were producing a quarterly flyer on environmental. This, we're getting it reviewed right now, and it's on composting program, and they'll come up with a different topic every quarter. So they'd like to, we'd like to ask if we were capable of doing that and sending it through our website for that. So if that's okay with the council, then I appreciate it. I'll tell them that. I also met with, the Planning Board had a special meeting last night about the redevelopment program that we're, that the council is starting with down by the railroad tracks. The people, we had a good turnout for public, and I believe that it was very positive, and we had no dissenters at all, and nobody, nobody disagreed with it. So it was unanimously voted in. We are actually talking about the possibility, adding some lots and blocks to the redevelopment program. And people were there, they were actually saying they wanted their lot and block to be added to it. So it's, it's a non-condemnation program, which means that if they don't want to be in it, they don't have to be in it. If it is, it could be beautifying and commercially making Waldwick a lot better off in the, down by the railroad station. I also have my report for the Buildings and Grounds, which is the, talking about the Borough Hall. As you can see, most of the work up here has been done. There's a few things that have to be fixed. Patrick had given a punch list that he's going to go through with them. Apparently, it's a very substantial punch list, but it's, you can, it can go from having a scratch on a wall to a chip, brick, tile, or something like that. So he's going to go with that. They are, work, as you can see out there, they have the machines out there at the parking lot. They delivered today, I didn't see them last night, so they must have got delivered today. All the trees were delivered as well, which they'll be working on that in the next week or two to get those, get that up and, up and done. They also have, the carpet is going to be done next week here in this, in the Borough Hall as well. PSE and G has finished the lighting here. They have some more lighting to do at Company 2, and then also at the wellhouses. And they'll be doing them in the next couple of weeks. And then once they do them, the bill, we're starting to getting our bills and our credits towards those. They'll also be doing, finishing up the pool this week with their painting on the, on the bottom. And also, apparently, the bridge that was proposed in HCA Park will also be, was awarded, the contract at Boswell was awarded for the engineering for that. And then the Ambulance Corps will end up being, they're, they're working on that. That has been approved, it just can't be done until, I think, after May 5th at least, because of contract. They can't award the contract to it, so they have, they have to go and get pricing for that, and then they'll come back, and they'll be working with the Ambulance Corps to get that done. And then they're also doing planting of trees in the park. I think you said during Saturday, but no longer Saturday, it's probably going to be the following, following week now.
They're still planting the trees, as long as it's not torrential rain.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah, that's a good thing to do, plant the trees in the rain is always good. You don't have to water them as much. But, let's see. I also want to say that I attended a baseball parade and opening day on Saturday, and we won't say what.
Don't you dare.
It was very good, that, I mean, the Baseball Association has, they said, I think, well over 430 kids in it, and adding the parents, it goes into over 500 people in their program that are actually coaches and kids in the program, which is, they said it was the largest program in the, in the town, but I, you know, I'm not going to verify that. But it was a very good time, and good weather, and I think all the kids had a good time. The mayor had a good speech, and a lot of people came up to him afterwards and said that he did a good job. He's doing a good job with that stuff, so thank you very much.
Done? Good. Our old Administrator, Patrick.
Thank you, Mayor. Only report is regarding the transition. So Kelly and I and Matt have been working together over the last few weeks regarding things that are ongoing now that they'll have to take up after my departure. Fortunately, the three of us work closely together anyway, so they're pretty well up to speed on that. I have a transition document that I'm overdue on providing them, but it will be comprehensive, so I'm sure they'll appreciate it. And they, they have my cell phone number, and I have some Irish guilt for leaving, and so I'm sure that when they call, I will answer and provide whatever service I can to them after I'm gone. So especially with Kelly, you're in very good hands as an interim administrator. That's my only report. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Last time we called you Borough Clerk for a while, Kelly.
No, I'm still the Borough Clerk.
Last time it's still.
No, I'm still the Borough Clerk. I have no report tonight.
Thank you very much. Matt, grant administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Since the last meeting, we've received a couple of grant awards. We received $70,000 from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs to support upgrades to the Lions Club Memorial Playground, paired with the Bergen County Open Space Grant that we'll be applying for in May. We have a public hearing about that at the next meeting. A large portion of this project will be covered by grants, so that's always good news. Additionally, just today, we were awarded $25,000 from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for assistance in updating our stormwater maps. $15,000 will be payable by the end of this year, and $10,000 when the maps are submitted. It's a longer-term project, they don't have to be fully submitted until the end of 2026. And I'll just reiterate on the mayor's comments about Patrick. He hired me only a few months after he came on board, and I could not have asked for a better mentor and boss over the past several years. I will miss him very much, and I know that Maplewood is in excellent hands. And that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Our attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I want to report on, Councilman Schatz mentioned the planning board had their area need hearing last night, so the next step is they will be transmitting to the mayor and council their resolution, which I heard is recommending the designation. And so, at the next meeting, there'll be a resolution on your agenda formally reviewing their recommendation, and if the council so chooses, declaring the area that was studied an area in need of redevelopment. And then, we can discuss the next steps after that. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Are we going to close at all?
No items for closed.
Okay. Consent resolutions and resolutions of the governing body.
Be resolved that the following resolutions herewith listed by consent, having been considered by the governing body of the Borough of Waldwick, are hereby passed and approved with the removal of policy vote B for a separate vote and policy vote C for additional information for the next meeting. 2023-163, approval of consent. 2023-164, approval of minutes March 28th, 2023 regular meeting, and April 11th regular meeting and closed session. Policy vote A, Grayson James Brown, 52 Sycamore Drive, request permission to install a fence on the easement that is part of their backyard. 2023-165, authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the Bergen County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund for base accreditation services and execution of a grant agreement. 2023-166, authorizing the execution of an equipment transfer agreement with Sprint. 2023-167, award contract with JPC Catering for Concessions Operations at the Waldick Municipal Pool. 2023-168, award a non-fair and open contract to CDW-G for IT equipment in the amount of $18,810. 2023-169, change order number one to SCOP LLC for administration building remediation repairs project. 2023-170, authorize advertisement and receipt of bids for the ADA Herb Ramp Upgrade Project. 2023-171, authorize release of dumpster escrow for 55 Harrison Avenue. 2023-172, promotion of labor to Public Works Repair Norbert Kazuba. 2023-173, I actually practiced that, and I still got it wrong. 2023-173, promotion of labor to Public Works Supervisor Repair Albert D. Clemente. 2023-174, accept the resignation of Patrick Weary as Borough Administrator effective April 30th, 2023. 2023-175, appointment of interim Kelly Halowitz and Matthew Gilder. Stipends Kelly Halowitz, Matthew Gilder, and Tatiana Markey. 2023-176, authorize tax appeal refund Block 17, Lot 60.01. 2023-177, authorize 2021 accumulated absence trust fund reserve transfer, and 2023-178, payment of vouchers.
We have a motion in a second to accept. Motion by Paul, second by Michelle. Anyone have a question? Nope? Clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Schatz?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Okay, we're just going to go to policy vote B. The issue with policy vote B, that's Phil Major, 24 Crescent Avenue, request permission to install fence with gate on the existing easement. Councilwoman Weber asked a question regarding the survey, and that the easement wanted us to check that with the superintendent, and when he looked at it, it's an active swale. So, we just want to request that the council approve this one contingent, as long as it's in conformance with the requirements set by the construction official and the DPW superintendent. This way, the homeowner can have the fence, but there'll be certain requirements for that fence, since it's an active swale. So, I just need, I guess, a motion and a second on that one.
We have a motion and a second? Motion by Mike, second by Paul. Clerk, take the roll.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Schatz?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I just want to point out that I have reviewed last meeting's minutes, and I'll sign off on it.
Okay.
And we thank you for that. Introduction of ordinances, we have two of them. With the Clerk kindly read, ordinance number 2023-12.
Ordinance number 2023-12, and ordinance amending Chapter 48 fees, Section 97-87 zoning permits, and 97-92.1 zoning certificate of compliance to amend fees in this section and include additional fees.
Motion and second is in order to move and pass this ordinance on first reading, and that the clerk be authorized advertising a local legal newspaper as required by law, setting a public hearing from two weeks from tonight's meeting, or at 7:30 PM, or soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached. Do we have a motion and a second? Motion by Michelle, second by Paul. On the question, what this is, is all we're doing is we're updating the fees to reflect what we already been charging. Nothing has changed. We've been charging these fees for a while, but we're just now putting it on the record for everyone. Anyone else? Clerk, take the roll.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Schatz?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
The Clerk kindly read, ordinance number 2023-13.
Ordinance number 2023-13, and ordinance amending ordinance number 2023-11, fixing the compensation salaries and wages of officials and employees of the Borough of Waldwick.
A motion and second is in order to move and pass this ordinance on first reading, and that it be advertised in local legal newspapers as required by law, setting a public hearing two weeks from tonight's meeting at 7:30 PM, or soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached. We have a motion and a second? Motion by Mike, second by Michelle. On the question, what this is, is that we're doing is we're revising our salary ordinance to add our court clerk and also our electrical subcode official. That's all we're doing with this one. Anyone else? You may take the roll.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Schatz?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Okay, we have no more, we have no public hearings? Any unfinished business from the council? Anybody from the council have any unfinished business? Yes?
Thank you. I wanted to mention that the Beautification Committee worked on the daffodils. We cut off the dead heads at the municipal building, Veterans Park, Borough Park, and the Public Safety Building. We have a meeting coming up to discuss the Earth Day, but now that it's pushed off, we'll even have better plans for the future Earth Day. We will be discussing our spring planting of vincas and the planting of trees at Borough Park with the Lions Club. We will be assisting them with that project. We also met to discuss the garden at the municipal building by the flagpole with the superintendent of the DPW, and we'll be finalizing those plans soon, and I'll be discussing them with the mayor and, I guess, Kelly and Matthew. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business? Sir?
Mr. Mayor, I did want to bring up, the Environmental Committee wanted me to bring up again to see if there's any more interest, or if there isn't any interest. We've brought this up several times. They are still interested in trying to do an odd and even watering system during the summer times. And I put this in front of the council, if there's no interest, I'll tell them, go back to it, try it again. We're not going to give up, but they're going to keep, I'm going to keep asking. So, the question is, can we ask the council what they think of this, or if there's no interest, I'll let them know that.
So, would you? I don't think it's a bad idea.
Okay. I mean, it is, basically, we would put it in front of administrator or interim administrator, and we would come up with a plan to try and deal with the water situations at the, during the summertime, when the water is the lowest. So, if they're interested, then we'll look at proposing another ordinance if we can. If not, then I'll drop it.
My thought would be nice try, go back and keep working. I'm a lawn enthusiast, I like to water my lawn as much as possible.
That's one.
I know that the Water Department comes out with the warning, don't water on this day because, you know, the tanks are low. Typically, we don't have a problem in Waldwick. The only thing I would like to see is people not watering in the middle of the day because the water just evaporates into the sky, it's useless, and you burn your grass. But I do not want to see us limiting our residents on watering. Thank you.
Okay. I'll check with Katie and Dawn just to make sure, but then I'll, right now, as is right now, we.
It's a no-go right now.
Yeah. So.
I thought they were going to work on some, like, education for residents first.
They've been, they're going to start doing this quarterly flyers, and they've been doing other things, the composting, they did training for it, and they'll do some more training for May.
I'd rather see it voluntary than made as an ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
Just education, like, to educate people on, like you said, watering in the middle of the day, it burns your lawn, your.
They plan on doing that, they'll put it in front and put it on the website, you know, as flyers type of thing.
Well, maybe because we have an extra week for Earth Day, maybe that could be one of the topics we could discuss.
Water conservation.
Mm-hmm. I just, I want to bring, I'll bring it back to them and see what they say. And we'll try again.
Yep, Mike, say try again.
There's no ordinance in the town about having, collecting rainwater, right? I know some towns.
No.
That's something, that's something that they're, that's one of the training programs they're going to do as well. They also, last Earth Day, they brought out, tried to sell the drums that they use for collecting it, the water, and they might be talking about it again at the next, at this Earth Day as well, so. They're trying to teach people to do that as well. I know some people have drums like that, and they water their garden all summer long with it because it works so well, so. We'll be, they'll be doing training on that to the public.
Any other unfinished business? Nope? New business? Anyone with new business?
I have an item of new business for the council to consider. So, I was contacted by Mary Beth Nappi regarding their, the Waldwick Education Foundation Townwide Garage Sale, which was held this past weekend. On Sunday of this past weekend, it started out with rain, and Mary Beth said that about half of their participants did not have a sale that day because of the rain. So, she is asking if they can, the mayor and council will approve a rain date for them. So, it will be under your first approval, but with the understanding that they weren't, or all of them weren't able to hold it this past Sunday, and they'd ask for a rain date of April 30th.
Did it supposed to rain that day? Do you remember? I think so. I think it's.
It's supposed to rain all weekend.
That's the request.
Well, what does this entail, first of all, on the Borough? Do we have to do, we have to come back in to get permits like we did last time? What goes on?
If the mayor and council said that this was under their previous approval and a full-on rain date, they wouldn't have to come back before a permit. But if the council said, no, we feel enough people were able to participate, or had an opportunity to participate, and they don't want to, they don't want to approve a townwide garage sale, then each or any resident could still take the opportunity to come in and get a permit for their own individual garage sale, right? It just wouldn't be a townwide garage sale. So, you wouldn't be saying to this person, no, you can't have a garage sale. And it is important to note that the townwide garage sale, per our ordinance, we limit the number of garage sales you're allowed to have in a year. The townwide garage sale doesn't have, doesn't count towards that limit, and so they still have the same opportunity to have a garage sale.
We'll start with you this time, Paul.
I have no problem with it. They could, I have no problem with keeping it under the same permit that we have for now. I mean, give them what, we don't have to do another permit, but I don't.
So, you want them to do another garage sale?
Yeah.
I have a problem with that.
Mike?
It rains again, man.
Yeah, I mean, if it rains, this is it.
Are we going to keep doing it?
This has to be it.
You can say that, yeah?
Yeah, this will be it.
Last opportunity.
Yeah, I think last opportunity. I mean, it got very nice out, you know? It was supposed to rain all day, but it didn't, so, and they were very busy on Prospect, I can promise you that. There were a lot of garage sailors, a lot of buyers, a lot of people parking in front of my driveway all day long. So, so maybe it was the other side of town that they didn't get out, but from my vantage point, it was a success.
It was sunny by you.
You allow them to do it?
Yeah.
One more time?
You are allowing it? One more time?
Just, I mean, I don't want to start a fight with the.
All right. I mean, it got very nice, and everyone who participated on my street had a garage sale on Sunday, so I don't see the problem, but we have to support the WEF, so I would say, yes, this is the one shot, not to carry it to the next weekend.
Very good. I will let them know.
And also, please let them know about the restrictions, about posting signs on poles and everything.
Will do.
If they didn't do it before, can't do it this time. But then, we'll have residents complaining about that. That's not fair to them. Okay, new business?
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment and mention resident Shirley Andre, who passed away on April 18th at the age of 94. And the reason I want to point it out is because Mrs. Andre was the welfare clerk for the Borough of Waldwick for many years. She was also the Citizen of the Year in 1984, being recognized for the welfare work that she did for our residents. She was a member of the Waldwick Women's Club, the VFW Ladies Auxiliary, the American Legion Ladies Auxiliary, and the Waldwick Golden Club. She was pre-deceased by her husband of 70 years, Andrew Andre, and she survived by her two sons, six grandchildren, and one great-grandchild. They lived in the borough since 1956 and just recently sold the home. So, Mrs. Andre made a difference in this world, and I felt, as Citizen of the Year, she deserved some recognition.
I'll send her a mascot from the American.
That's very nice. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I also wanted to mention Mr. Patrick Weary. I'm extremely sad, but mostly, I'm extremely grateful for the support these past two years as councilwoman. You were, I have to read it because I'll cry. You were willing to teach me the ropes, were willing to offer advice, always willing to listen, always open to my ideas, even my crazy ideas, and you were always willing to take my telephone calls. It was obvious how much Patrick cared about Waldwick, and he put his all into his position. He took initiatives to improve undeveloped park area, always helping to make Waldwick more beautiful, and supporting efforts for the same. Patrick made a difference in this town and made it a better place to live. I will miss his kindness, his smile, and his friendship. I will always be grateful to you for all you did for me and the Beautification Committee, and I wish you luck and success in your new position. I hope Maplewood realizes how lucky they are to be getting you. You will be missed. So, on behalf of myself, my family, and the many residents who express their sadness to me at your departure, only one thing is left to say, and that's thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm going to shoot for the hip, I don't have anything written up. Mine's going to be a lot, mine's going to be a lot shorter. I don't need to read it again, but thank you, Patrick. It was, it was a welcome. It was, it was a welcome smile that you, every time we walked in to this building. And, you know, we had our arguments, we had our discussions, and everything got worked out. I think you did a wonderful job for the town, and we wish you all the best of luck in Maplewood. And as Councilwoman Sherman said, I think they are getting a wonderful new administrator. I also want to point out about the mental health, I don't know if anybody realizes, but we do have a forum school here that's been, been in the, in the town for I don't know how many years that deals with the mental health children as well as what's not in our town. But ECLC is also another, deals with the children and mental health as well. So, just wanted to point that out, that we do have people here that deal with, help with that, and it's a very difficult job, and I appreciate them for all the work that they do during this month of mental health. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Are you gonna give them your car as a giveaway?
Motorcycle. Motorcycle. We're, Patrick and I have scheduled to take a motorcycle ride together. He's gonna ride on the back up Skyline Drive on his last day.
You gonna wear a football helmet?
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll have the video posted on Waldwick. Yeah. No, I, I, I just, you know, again, it's only been fifteen, sixteen months that, you know, we've had a chance to work together. I've, I've come to really, I've come to really appreciate working with you. I, I think you're a true master of your trade. You, you simply have an answer for everything, and, and when you don't, you don't, you don't try to finesse it like I would. You just say you don't have the answer, and you go and get it, which is, which is admirable. And I'm, I'm gonna definitely miss having you here, for sure. And, and, you know, good luck in Maplewood. You know, they'll, they'll, they'll come to appreciate you as well, so, thank you.
No car. Motorcycle.
Motorcycle, yeah.
Motorcycle. Yeah. It'll be like, like Top Gun, basically, right?
Yes, yeah, it's like the, the Top Gun scenes. Yeah.
Yeah, clearly, clearly, I'm on the back.
We'll get you a Waldwick football helmet.
Very good, very good.
Well, I've only known, I've worked with Patrick for a few months, and I appreciate, you have to be one of the smartest people I've met in a long time. You're very diplomatic, and you always are smiling, even when you're probably delivering bad news, you're still smiling.
Yeah.
And I appreciate you, how wonderful you are, and I know that you'll do very well in your new position. I'm very lucky to have you, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you, Michelle.
Any other new business? If not, you wanna talk?
Yeah, I would like to make a call.
Why don't we wait till the public talk?
Oh, sure, 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 yeah, we'll wait till everyone has their piece.
They got gifts for you.
That's right, that's right.
Anybody from the public would like to comment, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Just the name.
Just your name. No, thank you. Ted, thank you very much. It was a test, you passed.
I'd rather do my own than that.
No, no, you can't. We don't want to know where you live anymore.
Since when?
We don't want to know.
Twenty-one years I've been doing...
Your wife told us, don't ask your address.
Al Colton.
That's it.
Period. As most of you don't know, I'm a personal friend of Patrick's, and I'm pretty lucky 'cause I'm still gonna see him at our Lake Community. So, you're all gonna miss him, I'm gonna miss him too here. He did a, Pat, you did a fantastic job, like the rest of you. I'm very, very sorry to see you go. We know what we got, and we don't know what we're gonna get. We also know what we had, and you just fit the mold perfect, and you did your job great. But I just want to thank you for what, what you did for the whole town. You really did, and looking forward to seeing you summers.
Take pictures for us.
Thank you, Al.
Anyone else?
Yeah, hi, Eric LaPorta. Just wondering if the mayor and council are aware, in this town, we have a student, first time that I've called, he's an All-American Scholar Athlete. It would be, I think, really nice if we can invite him to a meeting here, maybe give him a plaque. I don't think it's really, it's ever happened.
We're working on that to go to the council. We usually do with something like that. I go to the Board of Ed meeting, and we...
No, he is in college.
I know, we're gonna have him come to the school. I was speaking with them about going to the school, but if you want us to bring him here, why not?
No, I don't, I just, you know, you know, so that's great. That's fantastic.
Facebook has a lot of stuff you like. You know that.
I see. There's two, couple of other things I'd like, the White Goff Ave and Franklin Turnpike. White Goff Ave going over the bridge by the market used to be where they, it was a double yellow line. A year ago, they took it off so that trucks could make a left-hand turn going into the sewer car. It's back to a full line. And we addressed this about a year, year and a half ago, and they took the yellow lines off so they can make it. Also considering double yellow lines, and I know this for a fact, up by the car wash on Franklin Turnpike, they're parking in the road getting in there. Planning board pushed this through, that they were allowed to have the car wash there, there's no car or park on Franklin Turnpike. There are many, many cars parked on Franklin Turnpike. Cars going into Allen Dale has to go on that yellow line. Cars coming down, and tankers, there's gonna be an accident because they're coming out of that shopping center there, too. I don't know if we just addressed the mayor and council with this to get on to tell the police department that was, look for it when the, was, car wash was put there, that no cars would be parked getting into the car wash. That's just another thing. There's gonna be an accident.
I, I noticed that on Saturday. I will, I will speak to the police and I will speak to the owner also.
I have, and I just have one other question. I attended the Board of Education meeting, but this was not brought up there. There's people in the crowd, you know, gossiping, put it that way. The track there at the high school, that's owned by the Borough Ward, is that correct? And the field's owned by the Board of Ed?
We, yes, we put the track in.
Okay, so, all right, the town owns it, and the Board of Ed owns the field. Okay.
No. We put it in, we don't own it.
We, not, we have an agreement. The council did this, an agreement, and they took care of it.
We maintain it for them.
But on an ordinance many years ago...
We don't own it.
You're a hundred percent sure?
We don't, we don't own the land.
We don't own the land.
We're responsible for the maintenance.
We have a use agreement.
Don't own the land.
That's right.
The Board of Ed, that's one of them. I don't want, it's owned by the Board of Ed.
I have a little note here to Patrick, if I can just read it. Somebody had a leave for medical reasons. It just says, Patrick, I am very sorry to see you leave Waldwick. Professionalism and knowledge you showed and shared in this position was second to none. You are the best thing that happened to Waldwick. You have shoes that would be hard to fill. I wish you much luck and success in the future. Thank you for all you did. She had a leave for medical. Lots of love. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? That's it.
Does anybody wanna see what comes out of our faucets?
Oh, I thought it was a lava thread.
I have the filter. Okay? And it's a disgusting mess.
Ted, what is that? Is that, is that the filter?
Yeah. That's the filter.
I haven't changed mine yet.
Okay, this is about a year. Second of all, my brother gets a water report, nine pages. The information that it's given to him, yes, it's from the state of Arizona, but why do we only get four? The list of ingredients or chemicals and whatnot, pretty substantial. Can we at least catch up? Can we at least, as a, as a town, inform our people of what's going on? Third of all, Hawthorne Sewing. We doing anything yet? Oh, I guess not. Okay. Patrick, yeah, you're going, but I admire you, your brown shoes all the time. There.
Thank you, Ted. Thank you.
I went out, got a pink and brown one. Good.
That's it, just the shoes? All right.
Yeah, I agree with everybody.
Ah, very good. Thank you, Ted. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry, you have to talk.
Yeah, I would like, I don't have to, but I would like to.
Would I go to the microphone and state your name?
No, no, I'm okay. I'm okay, thank you. I just want to extend my thanks to, first and foremost, the mayor and council for giving me the opportunity to be the administrator here. You know, I was fortunate when I got the position, and I think I was, I felt fortunate every day that I, that I had the ability to work here, so, thank you very much for that. Thank you to department heads, especially, we are fortunate in Waldwick to have an incredibly competent team of professionals here, and they certainly made my job a lot easier, so thank you to them. And thank you to the residents who were always forthcoming with their criticisms and also their praise, both in equal measure, which is, you know, is always helpful to an administrator. I, I'm, was fortunate to be here, I feel lucky for what I learned here, and I, while, while I'm happy, or I'm looking forward to my next opportunity, it certainly is bittersweet that I'm leaving the borough here. I do know that the Waldwick has a great reputation among administrators and other professionals in government, and I know that they think well of our, our borough here, and they think well of our professionals and our administrators, or our professional staff, our department heads. And so, I am sure that you will find a suitable replacement for me, and I know that part of that is because this is a desirable place to work, and that credit goes to all of you.